Yeah.
That's just only equation, isn't it? Yeah. Well, anyway, eighty-one percent is raised, which is really, really good.
Eighty-one percent is really?
It is good, yeah. Yeah. So that's it, Michael. So, Michael, do you want to put on, um, Tonight Sky, well, for a minute?
Yeah, Tonight Sky, nice, nice.
Yeah, for a minute. But, um, first of all, to you guys there, the bill is in, it's, it's two hundred and s- two hundred and seventy-two euro for insurance. So, Michael, will I pay that?
For the, what, astronomy group?
For the astronomy group. And that covers the cost of the equipment. And not here, because, no, we don't want to put this on as the insurance, yeah. But, uh, that covers, so I'll pay that, uh, this week. So this is Tonight, this is our sky now for October. Her voice will probably put you asleep, but however. What kind of use?
I brought up.
If you want to, Michael.
Your guide to constellations, deep sky objects, planets and events. Tonight's sky, highlights of the October sky. Saturn hangs low over the southwestern horizon after sunset. Try to catch a view of Saturn's rings in a telescope before the planet sets. Pegasus, the great winged horse of Greek mythology, prances across the autumn night sky. His body is denoted by a large area of stars known as the Great Square. Pegasus hosts fifty-one Pegasus, the first sun-like star known to have an extrasolar planet. The brightest corner of the Great Square, Alpharetz, is also the brightest star in the constellation Andromeda. In Greek mythology, this princess was chained to a rock near the sea to appease a sea monster. Within Andromeda's boundaries, look for M thirty-one, the Andromeda Galaxy, an island of billions of stars. On a clear dark night, it appears as a faint smudge of light. Approximately two point five million light years away, M thirty-one is the closest spiral galaxy to our own Milky Way galaxy, and the most distant object you can see with your eyes alone. Binoculars and small telescopes reveal M thirty-one's glowing nucleus and spiral arms. A smaller companion galaxy, M one-ten, appears as a faint spot near the large galaxy. The Andromeda Galaxy is slowly pulling in and will eventually consume another one of its small companion galaxies, M thirty-two. Mars, Venus and Jupiter form a planetary trio in the eastern sky before sunrise this month. Jupiter and Mars will appear very close to each other around the seventeenth of October. Jupiter and Venus will pair up around the twenty-fifth. An interesting meteor shower peaks on the night of October twenty-first to the twenty-second. After midnight, look to the east where the constellation Orion is rising. Every few minutes, you may spy a tiny remnant of Halley's Comet burning up high in the atmosphere. This is the Orionid meteor shower. The night sky is always a celestial showcase. Explore its wonders from your own backyard.
Is anybody had any questions? Well, I kind of have, because on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth of this month, we're going to have an event that has only happened five times this year, nineteen-hundred. And that's when the sun's light, you know, there's the earth, so the sun's light is going to go through our atmosphere and shine onto the moon. And the moon is going to appear blood red, it's going to be redder, see that film you got there?
Yeah.
It's going to be blood red. And it's going to last for about fifty minutes.
Uh, when?
The twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, so the twenty, yeah, the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth. And it'll be, um, she never mentioned it here.
No.
You know it?
You know? Makes you wonder, doesn't it?
Wasn't, wasn't that one that happened at the end of that one?
No, this is another one, no, no, no.
It was eclipse.
No, no, it's not an eclipse, it's, uh, I can't remember what it's called. Because there's loads of eclipses happen during the year, but this has only happened five times since the year five-hundred. And it's called the Blood Moon or something.
Right.
Yeah. So you could imagine a long, long time ago, all the sacrifice stuff. That's a beautiful picture, Michael.
It's landscape.
Oh.
Landscape, yeah.
That's really, really nice. Very nice. Very nice. So can I ask you, what would you like to do this year? Uh, do you like, want to do, learn more about, what do you know about astronomy, Michael? Uh, I just know a few constellations in the sky and that's it, so you might as well.
Well, that's good.
So you might as well treat me as completely. No, 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 that's good. Well, that's, that's good that you know even, so some people can't even find a cloud over the sky. Find that one. You can find, well, some people can't find a cloud. And you remember, one person was admiring, because, Michael, I'll tell you this, there was a person that the Jupiter was unusually big or something. And she was admiring it, but it was the moon. But I actually, I'm like, oh, say, like, fuck. That's, she'd say, my god, really? And she said, and she actually did say to me, it actually looks like, no, uh, it is. Because, um, just, okay. Okay. So the other news is that, um, earlier on in the year, in about March, we put in for, I don't know, what do you know, I think I was telling you this, Padraig, we put in for a telescope for the observatory at the back.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And the good news was, we've got the grant. But where's the money? So we still haven't got it. So they said we got it, and we've been ringing, and we've been emailing, and we've been everything, and we still haven't got it. So I, I, I kind of, I really give up at this stage, because you just can't, you can't move forward, you know, you can't move forward. So, and they made a big fuss over ringing and saying that you've got it and a substantial sum, and you have to sign, and I was like, this is great. And that was around my last, pretend April, May, that time, and we never got the money. And Tara, we were plan- planning on having an astronomy festival here for last August. And it was going to be the first one down here, and it was going to be big. And we were going to have huge, big outdoor planetarium, and we were going to have flags out in the street, and it was going to be absolutely gorgeous. We put in for a grant, we got the grant, and we still never got the grant, so we had to cancel the festival. So it appears to be a lot of politics is happening at the moment, so we can't really move ahead the way we want to, at the speed we want to. So that when you come here and you're brought around to the observatory at the back, that there'll be a great telescope there for you to look through, and you go, oh, yeah, this is fantastic, you know? So that's kind of slowing us down, bureaucracy, slowing us down at the moment. But however, we'll get there, yeah. Did anybody else, anybody do anything exciting in the summer, or?
No, I stopped for a gun, something.
Yeah, you went up to Donegal, didn't you, went to Donegal?
No, no, just up north.
Oh, yeah.
To see family.
Tara, tell us where you were since you arrived, you arrived.
But I have a simple question. Why Irish government has no supported this wonderful activity?
We don't know.
There are many Wild Atlantic signposts, maybe it's many costs. Why more wonderful this activity, they are not supporting, I don't know.
They spent fifteen million on the signposts.
Fifteen million?
On the signposts for the Wild Atlantic Way. And we, we don't even have flyers. We have, it's just bureaucracy, and I think it's because it's something new and something original, that they, they don't know what to do with. But the sad thing is, we can't, we can't, we can't do willish what we want to do. So that when you come here, you've loads of things to do, and the weather has nothing got to do with it. Because, you see, the computer there, that's not even our computer, somebody loaned us the computer, and we're even waiting for it. Like, it's ridiculous. But, I mean, unless anyone else has any ideas, there's nothing we could do, we're kind of stuck. Did you do anything during the summer yourself?
No.
I'm just hanging around. Michael? What's the plans for Tara? Have you seen him sitting there, love?
Yep.
Yeah, sitting there in the car, yeah. So what are we going to do now, lads?
But in Japan, there are many companies, uh, interested in this activity. For instance, last year, my friend working in the biggest company is, uh, crying, it's Toyota, Twitter's motor car, as you know. And do you know the parallel of Pennsylvania, the county Donegal?
Yeah.
They are moving, farming, uh, commercial locations as a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because why are you choosing a Donegal, uh, the round skate, and scenic view?
Yeah.
But I think this area, it's more fantastic. So now is our promotion is together, uh, Kerry type sky area, including Ring of Kerry. But the more, I think most, most important thing is, uh, it's simply funding and, uh.
Well, you see, I think Tara, but I don't know, you see, in Kerry, the major area for tourists is Killarney.
Killarney, yeah.
And Dingle.
Yeah, Killarney and Dingle.
And Killarney and Dingle, and possibly Kenmare.
Kenmare.
And, and Trulie.
Yeah.
So they're the four places that the governing bodies have put all the money into. So that's where the beach hotels are, and that's where the cinemas are, and that's where the, the what? The, 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 the swimming pools, that, that oaks are, everything's up there now. The headquarters, the headquarters for Faulty Ireland or Tourism are is in Killarney.
Killarney.
Yeah. So what Killarney wants is for the tourists, you come to Killarney, and you stay in Killarney. And then you get on a bus, and then you do the Ring of Kerry, and you go back to Killarney. So they really don't want tourists to stay here, because if tourists stays here, it takes away from the economy of Killarney.
Yeah.
So we think that that is, eh, what's actually happening. That they don't want the tourists' numbers to go down in Killarney or Dingle. But it's silly, because when tourists come over like yourself, you go to Dublin, and you come down to Kerry, and you go to Cork, and you go to Killarney, and you go, you go all around the place. But it's like they don't want the tourists to consider actually staying here. And that seems to be, that seems to be the stumbling block, to get the mindset of those people in charge to change. So that seems to be the stumbling, you know, that's.
How many people can withstand this area accommodation capacity?
I honestly don't know. I'd say Jackie could give you an idea of that. I honestly, I honestly don't know, but what I do know is that, um, where you're staying, B and B, where you're staying.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of B and Bs around here, there's the pub bays down the road that has rooms, like, that's like a small hotel. But they shut, they're all closed in the winter.
Oh, winter.
So they're only actually open from about May to September. Because nobody comes here. But if they knew the tourists were going to come here, then all those places would be open. Now, the biggest hotel that we had down here was the Derry Inn Hotel up near Michael, and that's, that was, that's where the Japanese crew stayed.
Yeah, yeah.
And they were actually shocked to hear that hotel is closed. Beautiful hotel. Yeah.
There's buyer.
A new buyer, yeah. But like, like, it, that it shut its doors. But that hotel only opens for about twelve weeks, because the, you see, the tourists go to Killarney all year round, and they just come around here and go back to Killarney. And the winter tourism down here is terrible, and the whole thing about the dark sky reserve is to get people to consider staying here, like the way you are, it's October and you're here. You know, it's cheaper to come in October, there's less traffic on the road.
The weather's better.
Sorry, the weather is better. The weather is better.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, what I was going to say, and when it's clear out, you get all those stars up in the sky. So it's, it's better times here, it's cheaper to come, etc. But, um, it's to get the likes of, the powers that be to start putting money into the area, so far. I don't know. We just have to go out on a big protest, fight them off. They wouldn't, they wouldn't. There's nothing we can do, we did our best, didn't we?
How about the cultural exchange program? For instance, primary, secondary school study abroad, short time. Such like summer camp.
Yeah.
And studying astronomy and studying, studying. But mainly point is accommodation.
Yeah.
Accommodation. How many people are you, are gathered and okay is the capacity in hotel?
The capacity.
B and B hostel.
It would be a good few thousand, I don't know, many thousands. Jackie would give you about a day.
Yeah.
And I don't, I couldn't, I honestly, myself couldn't tell you, but there actually is a lot of accommodation down here. When you consider the holiday homes, the, um, the hostels.
Hostels.
The, the hotels, the bed and breakfasts. And there's quite, I, I couldn't tell you many thousands, but there's several thousands. And there's accommodation for several thousands. At any one night. Not millions. You know, seven, and, and that's kind of a lot.
Yeah. All right.
What? Sorry, I'll take this call. Well, it's from Tom Hall. Hello, Tom.
I'm, I'm not my smart, you will please, how are you?
What made you escape this area, Joe?
Some of my family come here.
Oh.
My parents came back, um, over twenty years ago. And my brother was part of them, my sister. So, um, we're always trying to get back. So it was redundancy after twenty-two years, working in a dairy in England. And so this is the time, so, um, came over in two thousand and five. And I found, um, there was a place, B V P, um, who do the, uh, chemicals and the veterinary products.
Oh, yeah.
They were looking for my cardiologist.
Oh, that's it, all fitted?
Sure, all fitted, yeah.
Perfect. And I've already noted it.
Ten years there now. But, um, it was happy, my, um, youngest was born here. And the two girls are in secondary school now, Tara enjoyed it.
So you're fixed, Joe?
Yeah.
Me too. Not for anything. My family couldn't understand it, and then they came over this summer, and I took them around the sights, as Julie says, to the real, the real sights. And it's, actually, we do understand.
Yeah, I was going back on holidays all the way through from being a baby, and then having to return to England. But even careful doing that, in some of my late teens and early twenties, brought my wife over for the marriage. She didn't want to go back.
Very addictive, isn't it? Do you like Michael's look, Tara?
Yes, I, later I bought, I bought, I bought. Ah, yes, very nice.
His postcards, here, you have to bring some of them back.
Appreciate, thank you so much. Thank you, very lovely.
Very, very.
Very lovely. How, who is it taken? Oh, Michael.
Michael.
Lovely, great.
That's me, that's me.
But Julie, you are a photographer, demonstrated in Japanese convention exhibition, jewelry among the, uh, the water, the Milky Way.
Yes.
Very, you own, taking picture?
I don't, I took a couple, but not, not the great ones. Not, not the, I don't, I don't have a camera as good as this.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, don't. So when I take a great picture, it's by accident. You know, my camera is. My camera isn't that great. Uh, these, Padraig and Michael usually take all the great pictures.
But I have not.
And Stephen, of course, can't forget Stephen.
I'm not a professional photographer, but basically it is hard to take a picture for, at night's looking. Very difficult, you.
Very hard, yeah.
You practice every day?
Well, we were often out, myself and Padraig and Michael, and they'd be out for hours. I wouldn't be taking the photographs, I'd be standing, I'd be the standing person, looking through the telescope.
Oh, great.
And then they'd take loads and loads photographs, and you wouldn't even get one nice photograph, it'd be just a wasted night. So, um, getting a great photograph is like, I'm cheating. It, it's, I don't know, what, what is it, what is it, Padraig?
Sometimes you were pure luck.
Pure luck, yeah. Yeah, some, so, oh, Michael, the, the pictures, the pictures I took today tonight of the, um, of the sign.
Oh, yeah.
I tried that first, right?
Oh, yeah?
I think something dark sky.
Put them, put them in his, uh, will you put them in his table?
This is an Alstapland dark sky.
Hang on. Broke light. Can you see? Hang on, it's all broke light. What happened? Okay.
All right, okay, I, I had her in the stick here, I've gone to give a cue.
You can, yeah. Since we had to be screaming.
But these, these haven't been photoshopped or anything yet, so they're just.
She don't Photoshop. We don't believe in Photoshop, so.
I see.
Yeah. What are you doing? Here, here, here. And, and Padraig has some as well. So Padraig could be showing off, so you're the way around. Now, wait till you see what you're going to get now, are you ready?
Okay. Ready, go.
Password.
Yeah.
They have put, they have put up Stephen, oh, Stephen, you know this, they pull up the big, huge signs at the entrance and exit of the reserve, and myself and Michael went up the other night.
I've seen the, I've seen the poles up.
Yeah, he put, he put them up, yeah. So he took the photographs the other night when we were there, yeah. So I've seen the photographs for the first time.
Yeah, we'll have to go around.
We were at the side, we were all really getting killed. Yeah. Yeah.
Tomorrow?
I see, you, do you know what, you'd be, you'd be sick looking, oh, very nice, no, do them all, Michael, very nice. Outside, these are all Michael's photographs. Very nice. Go.
Very nice.
Okay, Michael. Michael, all proud. Michael really have seen the moon.
I know, understood.
That's your arrow. Yeah. Go. That's the, that's the truck.
No number. I can't say that, today, today's I take a photograph.
Today, did you?
Last year, I visited here, that, no. You, when you did this?
You went up yesterday.
Great.
Yeah.
I take a photograph, great.
I knew you were coming, and he, he's coming, he's coming up old.
Today?
Yesterday.
Really?
Yeah. They were put up yesterday.
Wow.
Is that Michael?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's George. Go back again.
Great.
Michael, is that a church, we? Now, where is it, where are you?
I don't know.
Is that a church? Is that a church?
One, two across the. A school.
Oh, I think that's lovely.
Is that a church?
No, a church.
Oh, that is lovely.
And it's nothing now.
Oh, I love it, where's that, Michael?
Near the site, where the site is, it's put up in, in Glenlark.
That's lovely, there, yeah. Oh, I kind of.
Yes. Wow.
There you go.
Very great.
We think we're great. Oh, no.
Oh.
That's, I'd say, my class, that's.
Wow.
That's.
That's your.
That's me shining the laser, and that's my class on, um, two, on Monday night. And that was the sky on Monday night.
Wow.
And it's just that cat or sibyl, which is not even in the cover zone. And it's just that Capar Sabin, which is not even in the core zone, and look how dark.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Another one.
Hmm.
Another one. Michael, I loved it, yeah. Eh, Michael, it's too bright. No, Michael, no, Michael, no, no, Michael, no, Michael. No, Michael, yes, we're getting there now. No, Michael, no.
Yes, there you.
It looks like crap.
I'm not very good at that.
No.
And that, oh, yeah, that's good, yeah.
Where's that?
That's, yeah, not a dress, it's fine.
What's it?
You know, the, the residence, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, very nice, yeah. Well, kind of, that's a bit disappointing. So Padraig, you're lovely ones. We're skipping over to Padraig's now.
Last game, last game, love me, last game.
What, what year is your doctor, happened to fifteen, actually? Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, cause she was in transition last year.
Which is, which is wrong, yeah. I think I'm working here. Yeah, yeah. I'm surprised that they can just do the homework straight away. I don't know, young one, she enjoy school.
Huh?
Young one, she enjoy school.
Does she?
Yeah, but a lot wouldn't start from the.
Which border?
Which border is it?
Eh, with the children, dark sky, but maybe not, not skip dark sky.
Dark sky.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, that's lo- where's that?
That's taken work.
That's taken up and drawn it, okay, very nice. Eh, kind of nice.
Yeah.
Still kind of nice, it's lovely, except for that big thing on the side.
That's for the uh.
Ah, man.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Moving statue.
Yeah.
That's not me posing.
Daily name. Daily name at night?
Yeah.
Wow, great.
That's the video show, you could, just see the, the boats in the water.
Oh, yeah.
Turn the.
Yeah, see boats and the, the falling stars.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
There's children, there's.
Oh, there's one up the top, yeah. Oh, wow.
There's a duck, there's a duck in the water.
But we're ducking, cause I can't see them. That's lovely, very, very nice. Very nice. Is that all the golden skinnix?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Ooh, that's great. Oh, that's very nice, Patrick.
Hmm.
Hello, how do you got that up from that?
The storage was the fastest storage for that. I can't remember what the, what it was.
It's perfect. Yeah.
That's in Phoenix, right?
Hmm.
Oh.
Oh.
Symphony in Spain. Yeah.
Hmm.
Good to get them doing that in the night under the stars with the Patrick. Yeah. It's more like they drown or something.
See, there's somebody start chuck, chuck up the world.
Oh, yeah.
They're going over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have been at the closest to see.
Oh, where's that?
Well, that's up north.
Actually, we can pass that, my. That's.
Hold the should be, yeah, yeah.
Lovely lily. Lovely nice. Wow, where's that?
Those thing around the back end.
Yeah. Yeah, the tree, the trees are lovely in the picture, right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially roe leaves, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Red one, the roe leaves and.
Yeah. Come on. Oh, that's lovely.
Hmm.
Oh, the, is that, is that Andromeda?
That's Andromeda, yeah.
So can you see Andromeda at all?
Yeah.
That's, that's a constellation.
Mm-hmm.
Or galaxy, galaxy.
Galaxy.
Yeah, that's, that's Andromeda galaxy. And that's.
Hmm.
That's beautiful.
Hmm.
That's lovely.
Great.
Well, that's nice. Yeah. Very nice. Oh, yeah.
That was the, the twenty's last moment.
Hmm.
Yeah. Twenty-four, wasn't it?
Twenty-fifty.
Twenty-fifty, yes.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
I, you can always move.
Hmm.
Okay. Very nice.
Was maybe just touched, it's more of a, 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 a move, is, is moved.
Tink it, yeah.
Move from a look like this, it's a move.
Hmm.
Well, here, it wouldn't be, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, that's nice, Patrick.
Mm-hmm.
That one there, so.
I'll see you back in here.
And we're back to the beginning.
The dollar, the, the dark.
The dark sky. Dark sky last day. That's one, that one, no, the next one, that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, this is the daytime, this is, is this from Oakon Mountain?
No, no, that's uh, eight percent B.
Well, how, where now?
That's, that's uh Greenwich Islands, the Greenwich Islands.
Oh, God, you got it pretty well, didn't you? Okay, that's very nice. That's very nice.
No, that's uh, I can't even hear the mic behind me.
Very nice.
I was just curious, can I go by distance?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, very pretty.
That's right.
What, what rock is that? Um, it's not rock or.
That's, that's, that's.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay. That's a lovely night, yeah?
Well, I still like it.
Oh, that's nice.
That's uh, that's good, I mean.
Yeah. Oh.
Oh, yeah, great. What is the most popular tractor in made in Japan, Ku- Kuwaita, but. Is it, do, do you know a Japanese company who made this tractor? No.
What's it called?
Cook, uh, tractor is very, it's branding by Japanese company. In, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, is it?
That's for the street, I'm like, you know, the, I can't think of you, but.
Is it the box, no?
No.
The box, yeah. This is on, this is at Marina, is it?
Yeah, it's at Marina, yeah.
Marina, okay. The rowing, whatever it is.
Oh.
That doesn't, that doesn't.
Very, very cool.
We're back in the same picture again.
Are we, no.
No, there's, there's, it's a different yard.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You're very green, you know.
They're very green, yeah.
Some, some.
Hmm.
Well, that's, that's. It's that.
Barisque.
The Carthy Castle, yeah, in Doncaster.
That's good.
I like that one, that's beautiful. Where were you when you were up at the um?
The new bridge.
Yeah, I was going to say. Wait there, yeah.
Hmm.
Oh, that's very nice, no. Yeah, that's lovely.
Hmm.
That's, that's young.
Your daughter, yeah, yeah.
Hmm, mass.
Well, that's uh. Knock, sure.
Oh, knock.
Hmm.
I bet the mother followed you, you were probably a child.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot more.
Well, this church located, where is church located?
That's not here, it's up in.
Mayo.
Mayo, county Mayo, oh.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's lovely, where's that, Mike, where's that?
That's the star.
Hmm.
That's here.
Hmm.
That's beautiful.
Oh, great.
That's the marines of these, and ours.
Yeah.
I'll just take it from home, you want this?
I'll take it home, yeah.
Hmm.
You can't get me to go to the building.
I don't think I can, I can try to, yeah, I can try to.
I thought you could color, oh, that's the fires.
That's the fire, that's the fire.
Forest fire, yeah.
Where's the fire?
You said the mountains.
Ah.
Yeah. That was last March, cause I remember. That's, but eh, that's not the Calabria. Oh, I like that.
You just down there, it's just a lot of ice.
Yeah, very nice.
Something is.
Hmm, vacuary.
Oh, that's lovely, I have something very pleasing about Bellicarby Castle, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's just being more atmospheric than most of the areas, it was a better place. Very, Bellicarby Castle over there.
Is it, yeah?
Yeah, my daughter and I just go down, we went actually go over the fence and went down to it. And there was a huge big ancient stone. Down there, and um it was a convent along the Grand Gorge, that was taken over by St. Paul, and I think, and then it went on fire. Fabulous, okay, yeah. It's more of a, it's a red brick.
I've only been that too much in years, I've done.
Oh, that's no, that's at the um.
That's the, that's the.
Yeah, Capar Sabin, yeah.
Was it Castle, was it Castle Crin mansion, is it?
Hmm.
Castle Crin, yeah.
Under there?
Yeah, yeah.
I looked at the kitchen.
We did, we did, we got it ready, yeah, we found time to get in, yeah.
A lot of time now, but we love that.
Oh, the kitchen.
Yeah, oh, stop. Huge big stone, it's like, we moved it last week. I'd use the same photographs.
Hmm, same.
No, it just adopted, of some reason, so we need to change the art.
Oh, yeah.
Something we need to just uh redo.
Yeah.
That's all.
No, yeah, oh, that's lovely, the red ones, gorgeous.
Hmm, hmm.
That's nice.
I was taking home, right?
Yeah, and the marina.
Hmm.
Oh, that's lovely.
Hmm.
The one behind, yeah.
Hmm.
The one.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, go. Where's that now? That's the, that's, that's the nice colors color.
Hmm.
That you want, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
That is the color.
That's, that's a weird name, is red.
Oh, that's lovely.[1630.41]